Good morning, welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Wednesday, December 28, and we're coming to you at an unusual time, 8:30 a.m. instead of 8:00 p.m., because it's a holiday week and we have a number of resolutions that had to get passed, so we noticed a meeting for 8:30 a.m. and are off and running and hopefully will not take much of your time or hours. Our first order of business is a public hearing regarding local law amending Chapter 173, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 173-60 and 173-63. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That makes three of us, public hearing is open. The local law amending Chapter 173 will change the parking arrangements on Ashland Avenue in the vicinity of the middle school driveway. It would, the proposed law would delete the parking prohibition on the west side of Ashland from the middle school driveway north 20 feet, the west side of Ashland being the same side as the middle school is on, and instead expand the requirement so that there is no parking on Ashland Avenue from the middle school driveway north 120 feet or south 35 feet, and those guidelines would exist from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, except July and August. So, the notion here is to expand the no parking zone around the middle school driveway on the same side as the middle school of Ashland, but those expanded no parking zones would apply only 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday to Friday and wouldn't apply at all in July and August. So, the goal there is to avoid inconveniencing the residents at times when there isn't any school. So, any comments or discussion? Welcome, Mindy.
When we, when this first came to us, we were concerned, I was concerned that it should, it was, we were noticing this for a parking restriction for basically all day, 7 till 3:00. That's unlike Roamer Avenue, which is just twice a day. And if this, I guess the PSC looked at this, is that right? The chief looked at this?
They did, yes. Originally, the proposal had been more far-reaching than this, but based on your worthy suggestions, it got ramped back.
Thank you. Did, and the people who are directly affected, the residents, they do know what's happening here?
Well, this is a public hearing, were they notified?
We weren't, we didn't specifically notice each household.
Oh, the hearing's just put in the paper and...
Yeah, and then we did a...
And they'll be surprised.
Well, I mean, the unfortunate reality here is that there has been a safety problem in that area, but it certainly has an impact on the adjacent neighbors.
I know, I just wasn't convinced that the safety problem was at any other time except at school drop-off and pickup times.
You're right, that's right.
So, that significantly alters their lifestyle if they can't have people come and park in front of their homes, so...
But this is during the week, when, you know, during school days, so if it was weekend, I think your original objection was that it was just going to be no parking in these areas seven days a week.
That's right, no, this is definitely an improvement, I'm just concerned. I mean, if the chief says that this is the best way to go, then obviously if there's a significant problem all the way through, and it is an active driveway...
But it's really just moving it down too, because it exists right now 20 feet back, right?
20 feet.
Which is significant. If you look at, I was there the other day and I saw what that meant to certain houses, and it's really, they'll still get to park in front, they still get to park in front of their houses, because the 20-foot setback is really lawn right away, you know, that kind of thing. I think they still have a lot of room to park.
Well, 120 feet sort of the frontage of a house.
Frontage of the house, yeah.
So whoever's there on that west side is gonna not be allowed to park.
The other reality there, I mean...
The largies.
The largies.
People can park elsewhere on the street, and as you know, as a Roamer resident, as I know, my first house in Pleasantville was right adjacent to the high school, I certainly was in a situation where cars were parked completely surrounding my house all day long, on every school day, and if you needed a parking space, you had to get out there and block it early, so...
Right.
You can certainly tweak this, I mean, down a lot if it really...
Yeah, so, I mean, I think if any residents are watching, my opinion would be, the Public Safety Committee has felt pretty strongly about the need to make this change, and if it looks as though there's a means by which we could implement this safety improvement with less impact on the neighbors, that would be a great thing, and we'd be happy to, as Judy suggested, reconsider it.
All right.
The chief was extremely concerned about the number of people that park there and staff that parks there for the school sometimes, and the likelihood that if you just had those two time slots, it would be hard to keep those spaces clear. So, at any rate, any further thoughts? All right, motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing closed. We have three resolutions. Steve, number 247, that's the resolution regarding the matter we just discussed.
Section 173-60, parking prohibited at all time. Resolved, Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves a local law amending Chapter 173, Vehicles and Traffic, Sections 173-60 and 173-63. So, 173-60 is deleting the current restriction on parking north of the middle school driveway on Ashland Avenue on the west side of the street. 173-63 is implementing a new restriction on the west side of the street, of Ashland that is, restriction on parking 120 feet north of the middle school driveway and 35 feet south of the middle school driveway on school days from 7:00 to 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, except July and August. I should not have added "on school days," we simply had "all days except July and August."
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, Mindy, 248.
The resolved, the pre-check register dated December 28, 2011, covering checks number 71154 through 71255 have been reviewed and are there. They are hereby approved as listed below in the record for a total of $641,474.07.
Is there a second?
Second.
That total of $641,000 is quite a bit larger than it would normally be for our final check register of the year. It includes $348,920.86, which is the second of two payments in the settlement arranged with the Foxwood condominiums regarding their tax surcharge. And we appreciate Foxwood's flexibility allowing those two payments to occur at separate times. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 249. Ryan?
Resolved, the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Recreation, hereby approves the following 2012 day camp fees. Would you like me to read you those?
I think you should.
All right, these are the village resident rates for, the first is for junior camp, the three-week program, current fee is $232, proposed fee is $248. For six weeks, the current fee is $330, proposed is $353. For tiny tots, the three-week fee is $263, proposed is $281, and six weeks is $460 currently and will be proposed to be $492. For the senior camp, three-week fee is $475, proposed $508. The six-week fee, current fee is $815, proposed is $872. Now, for school district rates, junior camp, three-week fee currently is $315, proposed fee is $337, the six-week fee is $535, proposed $572. For tiny tots, the three-week fee is $350 and proposed is $374. Also, for tiny tots, six weeks, current fee is $615, proposed is $658. And finally, senior camp, the three-week fee currently is, again, these are school district rates, current fee is $600, proposed is $642, and the six-week fee currently is $930, proposed $995.
Is there a second?
Second.
The, two things to note, one is, as many of you may already know, but some may not, there's a two-tier fee here. Village residents pay a lower rate than school district residents. We include school district residents in the village day camps because all our kids go to school together, and they certainly should have the chance to go to day camp together. And residents of the school district who are not residents of the village pay a modestly higher fee, reflecting the fact that they don't pay taxes to the Village of Pleasantville, and therefore, the administration and operation of the whole thing, which is funded by the taxpayer, gets reflected in a slightly higher fee. But as we do with all of our sports activities and rec activities in general, the goal obviously is to have kids who go to school together and have friends together have a chance to participate together. What's proposed here are modest increases in the average fees ranging in the sort of 6% or 7% range, driven in part by the goal you can imagine already, and that is to come as close as we can to covering the cost of our programs with the tuitions we receive. Anybody?
Well, also, we haven't raised our rates in a number of years, A, not saying that this is the time to do it, and B, we are one of the lowest-priced day camps around. With that being said, I would really like to talk to the superintendent about this before. I know, I don't know what the urgency is here, if there, she's trying to make a book?
Yeah, she needs to get into the brochure.
Well, she really needed to come and talk to us about this. I mean, this is, I know it's not a huge increase, but I'd like to know more reasoning behind it, so, it sounds strange, I'm the liaison to the recreation, Parks and Recreation Board, but I really think that this needs more of an explanation. Anytime you increase somebody's rates, I really don't know where this is coming from.
And, I mean, ultimately, these things do need to get discussed before there is some urgent, urgent deadline in the way of it.
Because to some people, this means a lot. I mean, this amount, if you have two or three kids in a camp, I know we do offer discounts, and we are one of the, there's not a lot of other towns or villages that do offer that like we do, we have discounts per child, but this means, this is a lot of money for some people, and I would just like to have a discussion if possible.
Are you wanting to table this, or...
I would like to table it.
Do you know the implications of that as far as the schedule for the brochure?
Well, we don't meet until the 9th, so I think it might be a problem, but, you know...
The next, our next meeting is...
Okay.
What's our next meeting?
The 9th.
Is the next regular meeting.
We print the brochure, and we can do an insert if we have to, you know, we'll work around if you can feel that.
I mean, literally, this is the first we've seen of this, so...
Yeah, I got this note that was left on my desk, you know...
No, I understand, so, all right, so, is there a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution number 249 is tabled for further discussion.
Thank you.
Any comments, announcements?
I just, the, the village kindly supplies doggie bags, not for food, at Nantihagen Park, and we have done that for a number of years, which has helped us keep the park clean. Where we do have day camp, we have a ton of kids up there in that park on a daily basis running around, and I just really urge residents and non-residents, because there are a lot of those using that park as well, to use them, because I have found that they, once the fall and winter come and day camp is over and the pool is closed, there's a lot more residue around there. And also, you know, our parks guys go out there and have to clean up and mow the lawn and blow the leaves, and it's not very pleasant for them when they have some surprises along the way. So, I've noticed no one's using the bags anymore, so, not no one, but very few people.
You are.
I certainly am, so, I urge people to really do that, it's just respectful for everyone that uses that park to, especially the kids. It's not really a lot of fun when your kid comes back to you with things on their shoes and things, so...
Well, and the same prevails really through all neighborhoods.
Right.
Bring along a bag, pick up after it's gone, that would be the responsible thing to do, as well as, I think, the law, so...
It is the law.
I just wanted to mention that a week ago Monday, we had an opportunity to get together with, for a sort of year-end opportunity to honor the members of our various boards and commissions, and although some of the work that goes on by those people is not visible to the public, there are 100, maybe, maybe 150 of your friends and neighbors who volunteer in various ways, some of them quite heavy lifting with multiple meetings every month, serving on the zoning board, the planning commission, architectural review board, conservation advisory, beautification committee, the list goes on and on and on, so, I just want to take this year-end opportunity to thank the many, many people who have volunteered in so many ways to help the community, and a once-a-year opportunity to thank you is certainly not anywhere near commensurate with the service they provide. I can tell you that we talked to various of our peer communities, and a lot of them are envious of the level of volunteerism that we have here in Pleasantville. When a need or a project or a board position or a task force gets created, it's not usually heavy lifting to fill up the roster, so, thanks to all of those people, you know who you are, very, very, very much appreciated. So, we hope that you're all in the midst of a little bit quieter than usual, or maybe a little bit louder than usual holiday week, and wish everybody in the Village of Pleasantville and beyond a Happy New Year.
May I say one last thing?
You can.
I wanted to raise the issue of, we do have a sign ordinance in this village, and lately I've noticed a number of kickboxing signs that are placed at about 12 feet high on telephone poles that, you know, I don't think they've gone through the sign review by the building department, they're just placed up all of the...
They're not permitted, they're commercial signs on public property.
Not permitted, commercial signs, I just think we need to get those down. I'm looking at them, they've been up for a month...
Well, we've taken down a bunch of them, and they come back again.
Well, then, let's, let's take them down, because if that's a way for, you know, small businesses to market themselves, just keep putting signs up on telephone poles at heights that you can't take them down, I object.
I wish it were such a small business, the offending party in this case is Tiger Schulman, they're based in New Jersey, I've called them three times, including a call to their general counsel, and thus far have not been favored with a reply, so, what's happening is they're coming in the dark of night with a bucket truck or something and putting up these signs at a very high level.
Exactly.
You can just imagine what the world would look like if every business in the region decided that that was a way to advertise by coming and putting up 50 and 60 signs around everybody's community, so, highly, highly frustrating, and I agree, we've got to...
Well, they are at prime intersections in the village, they're, they look bad. I mean, we spent a lot of time making the stones look good, and I, I look out of the window where I work every day, and I have to look at a kickboxing sign, and, you know, and people have said that to me, you know, how come we don't take those down?
Well, I will say, we have been taking them down, as you know, the last month or two has been a heavy-duty time for public works in general, but we'll reiterate that we certainly haven't taken them down. And don't hesitate if you should have any interaction with a company that behaves this way, to let them know, if it's a source of concern to you, to let them know, so, anybody else?
You know, I was on the Parkway the other day, and I think it has come up at a meeting previously here about the state getting their act together and getting some of that, some of the trunks and branches and garbage that's in the Sawmill River out of there to allow it to flow a little better. Be interesting to see how, and if that affects flooding in the village here, but, boy, they are taking a lot.
Well, the Sawmill was closed, Sawmill was closed right away last night.
Yeah, it was closed, I didn't come in there.
Well, because they started, they missed us, they didn't do the village, I mean, they said they were gonna start north and work south, which really doesn't make sense, because...
Start north for what?
Just clearing the Sawmill River, that was the plan from the state, that they would start north on the Sawmill River and work their way south, which really, if you think about it, doesn't make sense. You're an engineer, you know this better than I, that when you clear all the branches north and then the water flows rapidly to the south where it's still clogged, you know, you're gonna have more of a problem, so maybe they've changed their view, but they missed us completely, they missed, they started in Mount Pleasant, and that's a problem.
Well, I mean, the expectation is they'll get back north, right?
I'm hoping, but that wasn't what was written in their plan, written in their plan was they were to start north and work south, so they, if their point north to start was Mount Pleasant, they missed the Village of Pleasantville completely, hence, another reason why we're flooded last night, so, we need to talk to...
They look to me like they have the river from around the Marble Avenue exit on south.
It's Mount Pleasant, yeah, so, they started in Mount Pleasant, they didn't start in the village.
Right, but that's where the water would flow.
Well, I know, but if they, are they gonna come back and clean us? I don't know, that wasn't their plan, is my point.
I mean, it's still working out there.
I know, but they're, they're gonna continue to work south, they're not gonna come back, they...
Well, Patty had coordinated with them to help get this stuff started, right?
No, well, she was on the committee that helped, but she, you know, the last meeting, unfortunately Patty wasn't there. I got it, I sent it over to, at the county, I received it, and that is the instructions from the county, they would start at the northernmost point of the Sawmill River Parkway and work their way south. So, if they're considering Mount Pleasant the northernmost point, we have a problem.
All right, well, I mean, the northernmost point goes well beyond us, I mean...
Of course it does, yeah, so, but, but, you know...
All right, so, we'll follow up with that and...
What do we need to follow up with? I think, did I forward that email to you? I'll forward it to you today. It's, it's a, Andrea's, Senator Cousins outreach person that is communicating with the state.
All right, so we'll track that down, and certainly frustrating if they have thus far missed us, good news that finally they're doing this.
Right, it is, but I don't know if they're gonna work their way back.
And a shout-out on that front to Matt Brenner Schultz, who's not only helping, helping Patty coordinate some of this stuff, but this idea of cleaning out this stream basin was one that he presented quite a long time ago, in fact, had gone through there and walked and taken a lot of pictures.
And so did Frank LaCassio.
Yeah, Frank as well, so...
Yes.
All right, any further comment? Any questions from the public? We have a call-in number, I forgot to mention it, at 769-1677.
Nope.
Judy, our next regular meeting is January 9, at 8:00 p.m. with a work session preceding at 7:00, if there's no further business.
Excuse me, do you still need to comment on proposal about Ashland parking?
Not at all, come forward.
Was that decided?
No, we tabled it.
Tabled it?
No, not Ashland. We voted, we voted on Ashland.
No.
No, no, you tabled it.
We tabled it, the Ashland, no, I'm sorry, we did vote on, you're right, we tabled the...
We tabled the recreation thing.
Yes, come over there, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. We did vote, we voted to approve it.
Okay.
But if you're opposed, we're happy to hear it.
Yeah, I would like, I would like to comment on allowing parking on Ashland Avenue. The question is, where would you like us to pick up our kids from Bedford Road School? As it is, you have to get in that area by 2:30 in order to pick up your kids at 3:00 to find parking anywhere in the area. Manville Avenue is already backed up a quarter mile each way with parking from teachers' parking.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just for the record, could you identify your...
Daniel Layton, 44 Summit Place, I've lived here a little more than a year.
Right.
I've got one child currently in Bedford Road, I've got another one starting kindergarten next year.
Are you familiar with where, I just started to interrupt, are you familiar where this restriction has been placed? It's over by the middle school driveway. The reason I wanted to ask you that is I live on the corner of Bedford and Ashland, and I rarely see, you know, pickups and drop-offs for kids by parents are constantly on the side street to my house.
Right.
But I rarely see folks parking more than half a dozen cars going up Ashland. This is quite a ways, this is down by the middle school driveway. I don't think it would fit, it would affect, from what I've seen, people parking for Bedford Road pickups and drop-offs.
Okay, I mean, it was very, I saw this article on Patch this morning, and my wife saw it, the first thing she said is, where do you want us to pick up our kids?
Well, I mean, the, here's what we're trying to balance in life, and this has been going on for a long time, and will go on for a long time, simply because we don't have schools that are surrounded by lots of parking and lots of pickup spots, so, we're constantly trying to balance convenience and efficiency, so that people, A, can make drop-off and pick-up conveniently, but also have it happen quickly and be ended as soon as possible, and at the same time balancing safety, and prior to when you moved here, there were a lot of discussions about Academy Street, for example, and for years, people queued up on, on the residential side of Academy Street, and there were a whole series of discussions about all of that, and, you know, what certainly has happened over time is, we've tried to tweak these rules in various ways to try to balance safety with, with efficiency, and in this situation, there have been a lot of concerns at the middle school driveway, that kids who are coming out of the middle school driveway, pedestrians were...
On Ashland.
Coming out the back driveway onto Ashland, there were too many cars jockeying around right around the driveway, and the other thing that happens, as you know, is human nature, is people try to sort of skate their rules a little bit, and they recognize that, oh, they're gonna only be here a short time until they park in the no parking zone, and so the effect of all of that was, there was significant concern that somebody was gonna get hurt at the middle school, and obviously, that's a paramount concern and all of that. As Steve indicated, I'm interested to think, are there BRS parents parking on that far into Ashland?
Um, so, I don't do the pickup regularly, my wife does it normally, but she's, you know, said that parking gets very far into Ashland. Sutton is usually completely filled up by 2:30, and as it is, we've lost another two parking spaces on Sutton, because there's a new construction going on there that's increased their driveway size. Manville is usually backed up both sides, because that's where most of the teachers' park.
What does the school tell you to do?
They don't really...
Because that's, that's the problem, you know, that Bedford Road School was built with no parking lot.
Right.
And, and it's a, it's a problem in the village, and it's been a problem for all the homeowners around there that bear the, a large burden for, for all of us that use, you know, are members of the school. I used to park on Ashland to pick up my kids as well.
Right.
But I used to park closer to where Steve was talking about, and run out, get my kids, and run back, because there is the cut-through. The other, how old is your child?
One, seven, in first grade, and the other one is gonna be five.
So, they're young for you to say, meet me four blocks down. I understand that.
Right, as is, my wife has...
I get it, yeah, I know, you wanna go there, and you need, and in first grade, they need to see you when you pick up your kid anyway.
Right.
But, I don't think, as Steve was saying, I don't think that this will affect really where probably your wife is, is parking to pick up your child. It is a safety hazard for the children leaving middle school as it is right now, this is why we did this.
Okay. I mean, the other thing I would say is, I used to live at the corner of Sunnyside and Clinton, right next to the high school, and now, then, when my kids were still relatively young, we moved to Martling, and walked to school every day from Martling, and there is never any parking problem on Martling, but perfectly understandably, the average person picking up their, their kid from school who is driven to do so feels as though that's a little far away to be parking. I can tell you, just, if anyone wants to hear it, that there's always parking available there, and we always walk from there, simply because we lived there and viewed it as an asset of the house, that we could walk to school from there. So, there isn't any question, I don't mean to be unsympathetic to that, because it's, it's a tough situation, and it gets extremely tough in the winter, which is why...
Yeah.
...our DPW crew goes beyond what would normally be done to try to clear snow out of sidewalks in the areas where the school traffic is, but, you know, last year, as you may recall, it was just, just a nightmare situation, and gets worse. But by the same token, in a situation where, you know, we, I can also tell you that not all of the parents are completely responsible in their behavior in those areas, and I, again, I don't mean to be unsympathetic, but people are busy, they're crazy, they're hurried, they're afraid, they're late, their kid is coming out, they're not there yet, they're on the cell phone, you know, we've had too many circumstances where there really have been like, whoa, what's going on here, that we've tried to, to get some control. We certainly had that problem in the area of the library, and had to tweak the rules on Roamer about that, because of course, that's also a prime spot, so...
You always can find a spot on Manville, but you have to walk.
Right.
It's a huge walk, and a lot of people just do that because they can't find spots on Sutton or Ashland, because that, those are the primary, the primary spot.
And also, Manville's a much more busy street to try to get across when you're...
No doubt.
Well, we do have the crossing guard, so, you know...
But it's, it's a busy street, there's no question about it.
Yeah.
I mean, in a funny way, as compared to many years ago, there was a point in time in the 90s when BRS had a much smaller enrollment, and of course, it was before the new school was built, and the sort of dynamics of the property were a little different, because the school was closer to Bedford Road, but, you know, there was a point in time when there wasn't all that much parking in Manville, and in, in a funny way, the fact that there is so much parking has actually helped a little bit, I think, at school pickup and drop-off, just because it creates a more congested scene that telegraphs to people that there's a lot of activity there, so, totally mindful of the problem, not trying to make it worse, but the Public Safety Committee, which is made up of citizens as well as the police chief, took a look at this particular issue and felt pretty strongly that something had to be done in that area, so...
Could we suggest that, that you come back if there is an issue on...
Yeah, totally, I mean, I encourage you and anybody else who's listening, or people you know...
Is there, is there a diagram that shows where the new restrictions take effect in relation to the rest of the street?
I mean, we could create one, it's, it's just on Ashland, 120 feet in the direction of Bedford Road. It's just on Ashland, 120 feet in the direction of Bedford Road, and what is it, 30 feet the other way?
I think it's opposite.
Yeah.
It's 120 feet.
120 feet.
Up towards Nanny Hagen.
No.
And 30 feet.
No, it's 120 feet, no parking, 120 feet towards Bedford, that's, that's north.
Ashland Avenue, and then it's 30 feet from 80.
Right, and then 35 feet south.
Shane lives on, the residents on Ashland and Nanny Hagen really want this to.
Andrew, meet Shane McGaffey. Nice to meet you. He's the station director at PCTV, our cameraman.
And he's also on the school board.
He's a school board member.
You should talk to them about, about maybe having a better pickup.
This is small-time living, everybody's in the same room.
Maybe having better pickup at Bedford Road School, where parents could, like, when you do your drop-offs at Bedford Road, parents could pull up and pick up as well.
We can talk about that.
No, I think that's something you should take to the school board, Andrew.
But I grew up, I grew up at 80 Ashland Avenue, and my parents lived there until four years ago. And this is a, so basically, you've got the middle school driveway, you have the house to the left, and you have the house to the right.
As you're face-looking down the driveway from Ashland.
Or as you're coming up, as you're coming up that driveway, the house to the right would have 30 feet of no parking, basically, through their driveway, and the house to the left wouldn't have any parking.
For 120 feet.
For 120 feet. And that is simply to deal with congestion. A lot of people park there, and basically, the only people this affects are the teachers and the aides that top, park as close to that driveway as possible to get to school in the morning.
Because there's not enough parking for the teachers and the aides in the middle school.
However, going up, and I now live eight houses away from you, so I go by it every morning and every evening, and sometimes during the day. And I can tell you that no Bedford Road parking ever gets close to that. Literally, the only people this will affect are the teachers and the aides that park there.
And they're parked there all day.
And they're parked there all day.
And it's a hazard, you can't come out of that driveway.
When you come out, you can't see the left, you can't see to the right, if there's a kid coming or a car coming.
And there's a crosswalk right there where kids are crossing.
Right. And so you literally have to take your life into your hands and kind of, I think no one's coming.
Right.
And so it's a safety concern. In terms of parking on Ashland, the key is to remember that by Steve's house, for, what is it, 80 feet, 100 feet?
Something like that.
There's no parking.
In for Bedford.
But people park there anyway.
Right.
And that causes another fire, another hazard, when you're trying to take a left onto Bedford Road, because you can't necessarily see.
Right.
But yes, parking is a problem, but generally, it goes down Ashland, I would say, about two-thirds of the way to that spot, there's never a problem there.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other thing I would say is, I mean, all the discussion here is, and the discussions that have gone on for decades about parking around the schools, is a reflection of the fact that, of a good thing and a bad thing all rolled up into one.